The regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission will come to order. The time is 6:30 PM. First order of business is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Chairperson May.
Absentee excused.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Walls.
Absentee excused.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Didn't hear anything about Diane.
Commissioner Mativier.
First order of business is approval of the agenda. I have motion? Yes.
Move to approve the agenda as written for July 9th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Steenberg.
Aye. Approval of minutes. I have motion for approval of minutes.
Motion approved minutes as posted.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Steenberg.
Okay, public comments on anything that's not on the agenda. Do we have an agenda out by the podium?
Yes, yep, there's copies right on the.
Anybody want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Nope? Okay, next business items. First order of business is PC number 20-004, request for a site plan approval to construct a new parking lot at 31430 Block Street. Currently, it's in the R1 designation, R1 and R3, multiple family zoning. Let's hear what you got to say about it, Kevin Mario.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to review a proposal for a site plan for new construction of a parking lot at this address. The applicants are proposing the installation of a surface parking lot for off-street parking to provide an additional use on-site for the Odd Fellows Hall. The site itself was previously a single-family structure with two accessory garages. The house was torn down and one of the garages was torn down. So, right now, there is an existing garage in the northwest corner of the site and it is, the rest of it is unimproved. So, they would install, they would construct a parking lot with, right now, is proposed 31 parking spaces and also with a bio-retention pond for the stormwater aspect of treating this, any stormwater on the site. The use itself in the R1 districts is, in R3, is permitted. This, while there are different lots on the site, it's considered one zoning lot because all of these properties are under common ownership. So, the Odd Fellows Hall, the vacant properties north of the Odd Fellows Hall and the property along Block, they're all under same ownership, so we treat it as a zoning lot. It would be nice if they combined the lots, but once again, it's not necessary at this point in time because the use itself as a, as a private park is permitted in the district. And so, the parking, the parking lot would be an accessory to the use and so therefore the parking is permitted as a, as a non-residential use. In terms of setbacks, we actually don't have setbacks for parking of non-residential uses in the R1 district, but we do have a screening requirement, so I'll get to that in a moment. In terms of the parking spaces and the dimensions, they're all according to our code and meet our ordinance requirements. One piece of information we will need is, we didn't, I did not have the details of the floor plan or the capacity of the Odd Fellows Hall that it would serve. Typically, if this is as a place of assembly, the parking requirement is one parking space for every three people allowed in the building at maximum occupancy. And so, we would just need that information to determine if the number of parking spaces is permitted. However, usually how it goes is, in this particular case, whatever the final number of parking spaces are being provided, we just multiply that by three and that indicates the capacity that's allowed inside the Odd Fellows Building. But that information would be necessary if the applicant wanted to service more than what the parking will be provided. In addition, the proposed parking lot does not have any, currently any barrier-free spaces provided, so they'll have to provide at least two based on the fact that they're having over, they're having 30 parking spaces. So, two will be, have to be dedicated as barrier-free spaces and then a loading zone we have to be located most likely between the two and be a sufficient size to allow for at least one of those spaces to accommodate a van. And it would just involve a reconfigure, a restriping of the proposed parking lot. With regard to lighting, we do normally require some type of lighting, so at least to make sure that it's lit at an adequate level from a safety perspective. However, we also want to make sure it doesn't detrimentally impact the adjacent neighbors, especially given the fact these are residents. There is no proposed lighting on the site now. One possible economical solution and it would actually provide a good location too, similar to the Straight Farmhouse location, they have a overhead parking light on an existing Edison pole or DTE pole. So, they could possibly have that as a location, it's just an option. But the applicant should propose how they, they'd want to have a modest amount of light provided in the, on-site and we would request that that be shielded and directed downward so that way, once again, not impact the adjacent residents. When it comes to the landscaping of the site, beginning on page three, I do have a chart about the number of parking, landscape that's provided. First requirement is for buffer screening along the road and actually, my chart is actually, doesn't have all as proposed. They actually are required to have 12 shrubs and they have 11 actually on the parking, on the site plan, not seven. And they're required to have four deciduous trees and they actually do have four deciduous trees on-site. What they've done is located them along Block Street and then, in order to plant them appropriately and per landscape standards, the extra trees that wouldn't fit in that area, they dispersed throughout the parking lot, which is appropriate and that's what we've done in the past. So, that's, so that configuration is adequate. And when it comes to that screening as well, one other requirement for the parking lot is they have to provide a sufficient number, amount of green space. They didn't provide the calculations, but looking at the site, it definitely seems like they meet the standard. The standard would require about, because they have 31 proposed spaces, they'd have to require 310 square feet of interior parking. They do have a pie-shaped landscape island right in the middle of the parking lot and that, by a guesstimate, that's about 470 square feet. So, they meet the standard, we would just need their landscape architect to verify that they're meeting that requirement. So, in the end, the parking, those standards are sufficiently met. The one other issue is regard to the screening. As I mentioned, we do have a screening requirement between parking lots and adjacent residential property. The applicant is providing an evergreen screen in the form of 22 arborvitae along the 140-foot side lot line, shared with the house that fronts on Block Street. And then, they have 16 arborvitae along the 100-foot lot line that's shared with the house that fronts on Elmwood. While it looks sufficient on the parking, on the site plan, it comes out to about approximately a six-and-a-half foot on-center planting scheme. So, we would just need to have their, their landscape architect confirm that that would actually result in an opaque screen for those adjacent residents because while arborvitae can grow pretty robustly, I'm not sure if they grow sufficient width to provide that adequate screen. So, they might need to look at providing some additional screening. The alternative would be to come back later and plant additional landscaping, but you know, we want to make sure that the site functions harmoniously with the adjacent residences. We don't want them to be complaining about headlights and that sort of thing and I'm sure the applicant wouldn't either. So, I would just suggest the applicant's landscape architect verify that planting them, how far apart they're going to plant these screens and making sure that that's sufficient, that they'll grow wide enough to create a sufficient hedgerow with landscaping. Beyond that, that's the mainly crux of the planning-related conference. We do, in your packet, I do believe, I provided a copy of the engineer's letter. He just mentioned that the applicant will have to go to Wayne County for a view of the stormwater. In the, initially, the city engineer has no problem with the bio-retention aspect. One thing I note is that usually bio-retention ponds have other landscaping in them as well and that usually just enhances the look and the screening of the bio-retention. So, that'll be another attractive feature on the site. So, with that in mind, in the end, the construction of a parking lot on the site, we feel is going to add to the function of the Odd Fellows Hall and be an asset, to a community asset in the city. So, it will vastly increase the utilization of this site and how it functions and how people could use it more. So, we would recommend granting site plan approval contingent upon, contingent upon if the planning commission feels that the site plan approval is appropriate at this time or if you'd like to see more of the information as related to the parking standards, the proposed lighting that's, would be in the site and then the revisions to the landscaping.
Questions?
I don't think we touched on the sidewalks.
Go ahead, Eric.
I just want, these will be completed, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, actually. It's a benefit as well of the development. The sidewalk continues, begins at the 31454 block residence. But right now, there's no sidewalk connecting the homes westward on Block to Merriman. This site would fill in that one missing gap and then they would have a continuous sidewalk for the residents further down on Block across this property and then connecting to Merriman. So, that's another benefit.
Randall, Kevin, you guys got anything? I got a couple of questions. Tell me what a bio-retention is versus a regular retention pond.
A regular retention pond is either, you either, it's a retention or detention, which is mainly it's sloped and to hold water either momentarily or for a finite amount, for an extended amount of time. And then, it's connected to the adjacent stormwater system. So, eventually, it's a holding pond to make sure that when there's a 100-year storm event and we have one of our big rains, that the water doesn't go directly into the stormwater system. A normal retention or detention pond just holds theirs basically as a pool until, so that it escapes the site at a normal rate, so it doesn't overflow the system. A bio-retention pond is not as steep and instead of having just a regular, you know, hydro-seeded lawn area, they usually put in a lot of different native plants in order to increase the filtration of it. So, rather than having the water wait to go into a pipe over, down the road, it hopefully filters into the ground and goes into the ground naturally.
So, there's no valving on that connected to the sewer?
And depending on how it's designed and the engineers will design it the right way and if they feel that it doesn't have the type of soils they use and then the type of plants they use doesn't, isn't going to handle 100-year storm, then eventually, they'll have a smaller outlet as a safety valve because the last thing they'd want to have during a really big rain, to have this pond then suddenly overflow.
Is there an example of that in Virginia Gardens?
I think so, I think that's where we have one. That's where I was wondering.
There's a lot of cat and nine-tail kind of stuff.
Yeah. And another way of bio-retention pond is a little different is what they have these smaller, what they call first flush areas, is when a water first gets into the pond, it goes through some rocks and pea gravel and a lot of different gravel to naturally filter it so that the, like the oils and the radiator fluid and all that stuff gets filtered through a first flush and doesn't get flushed into the stormwater system. So, that's just another different way. And this is something that various communities and we, like you said, we've had one in one of our, one of our developments and Wayne County is actually starting to not push, but they're definitely allowing and they definitely want to encourage because they.
Looks a little more natural.
It looks a little bit more natural and it also treats the water better and more, most importantly, for Wayne County, they, and I don't know if you've heard, but in Detroit, a lot of, they're starting to, in other communities, they're starting to put taxes on people if they don't hold the water on their site efficiently because they, because they need, this water gets put into the system, it gets, sometimes if the system isn't separated from their sanitary, it mixes with the sanitary and then it gets, during major storms, then it gets dumped into Lake St. Clair or wherever the outlet is. So, then it gets dumped there and then they have to deal with trying to treat it and they build these big tanks and all this other.
Okay. Couple other things. Does the building currently have a CVO?
I believe so, it's something I can double check.
If it does, wouldn't the fire marshal? Oh, John?
Oh, there you go.
I attempted to get a CVO and they said that I couldn't do it because I had a parking lot.
There you go.
Everything is done with the building and all people have gone through it, seen completely reded and we rewired it, replanted, new furnace, air conditioner, everything else, so it's all, it's ready to go. Another question, we're figuring occupancy at about 75 to 80.
That's what I'm trying to determine if the fire marshal has already done a review of the building and its square footage and ingress and egress, et cetera, et cetera.
We did, we added a handicap ramp, we stuck a handicap bathroom on the first floor, so we did everything to do on that to look like it needed to be first class.
Sir?
I think the building is right now, it's 771, we have parking, I believe we're 82. We actually have extra parking for the occupancy to go, that was one of the things we took in inspiration.
And that is correct because with our parking standard, for 80 people, they would need 26 spaces, so they would, do have a few extra.
Covered on that.
So, they're covered on that, so that way, more importantly, they get the capacity they want to see in the building, the parking serves it and then also, they could even lose, quote-unquote, lose one spot by changing that into the landing area for handicap parking and they will still have their capacity of 82 people in sight.
Now, with the usage of the building, the proposed capacity of 75, the parking spots, do we need a dumpster?
That could be up to them, if they want to have a dumpster, it wouldn't, it would need a dumpster enclosure. The other alternative is to have the dumpster, have the trash enclosed in the building. Now, whether that is, meets the health code, I don't know. That would be something, depending on the type of services they provide, for example, if the interior of the building is only for assembly, I believe the health code would allow the trash to be enclosed there because they, like, if they do have any type of food service, it'd be a catered event, so the food wouldn't, the facility wouldn't have a permanent storage for food and so therefore, they wouldn't have to worry so much about the garbage.
Do we have a definition on paper of the usage of the building?
No, actually, we don't and that's something that, right now, it's presumed to be just an assembly hall, place of assembly.
Without having that on paper, how can we make a determination on what the potential is for refuge and storage or refuge and whether or not we're going to need a dumpster?
It's a good point and actually, a lot of our requirements when it comes to refuse is we just rely on the health department. So, maybe we need to investigate that more and talk about putting that into the zoning ordinance because right now, it's strictly up to whether they, they can also obtain any necessary approvals from the health department.
Now, does that come into play with the CVO? Is the health department part of that equation?
Usually, the health department, what they will do is after an applicant applies and the use is approved, they have to go through and get their trades approval, but then, and at that point in time, they have to submit anything with regards to the health department prior to the issuing of business license, the CVO being finalized and then official license getting issued. And that, we usually only give a flag for the health department approval when there's a restaurant involved or any kind of food service.
Food prep.
Food prep on-site. So, usually, food prep is what triggers the requirement of some type of authorization letter from the health department because we do receive those for.
Last but not least, we're looking to build a parking lot in an R1. Parking lots are not allowed in R1. Are we going to request a zoning change to VP, vehicular parking, even though the sites are all owned by the same person, where the lot's going to be versus a building? The last one we did that fell into this category was, what was it, about three or four streets west of Inkster and north of Ford Road for the, what was it, the phlebotomy?
Phlebotomy lab.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, that one right there.
That was in R1 because they bought the house.
The house, the house behind it and then they moved it over.
No, they didn't buy the house, it was an empty lot adjacent to the house and the house sold them the empty lot. So, it got a, it got a masonry wall around it and did that not get changed to vehicular parking in order to approve that?
Believe that one, I'm not sure if that one did, I can tell you in one moment. I can let you know that with regards to this particular use, I did classify it as a private park and then as a private park permitted in the R1 district, I indicated that a parking lot would be an accessory use to the park and so therefore, that's how the parking lot, was my thought process in terms of allowing that to be located in the, in the district.
How is that analogous to CVS and the parking that they want to create directly behind in what currently is a?
VP.
Retention lot.
That is different because they're commercial users, looking to establish parking that serves as a commercial use. And I believe the VP district was intended to provide that accessory parking for commercial users, similar to how it was established behind the, is it Knights of Columbus?
Yes.
Over on Ford Road, similar to that situation and I believe similar to the phlebotomy situation, but I'm not sure if that.
So, this building is zoned what?
It's technically right now, it's zoned in the R3 district. We do have other locations throughout the city and most typically along Ford Road that where we do go and when there's that one extra parcel deep behind, basically, when there was an alley, if there was an alley or whatever, we would, we did have a history of making sure those were zoned VP, those would be limited to only parking because that's the intent of the VP district, to only allow parking rather than rezone properties to commercial, allowing the potential for the commercial use to get back there. I presume the city wanted to make sure that only parking would extend into the residential neighborhoods and not allow for the uses. So, the Knights of Columbus is one on the opposite side behind the, those medical offices that are low with like the Lemon Law sign.
Yep.
That business, the CVS was another one and then even behind and on the opposite block, I mean, on the other side of the street of, right there, that parking lot where the, right now, it's a dance studio and the Jets Pizza and the Sherwin-Williams.
Okay.
That's the same as well. And then, you are right, behind the phlebotomy, it is, that site was changed to VP behind because it was adjacent to the commercial property. And then also, behind the big boy, that one on Harrison.
If I'm understanding this correctly, are we on solid ground because it's zoned, currently zoned as an R3 multiple family?
I believe.
Is that where our distinction lies?
That's where I drew my distinction because the, because the use itself is allowed to operate and see in the R3 as a, as a park slash place of assembly open to the public and a nonprofit use, I believe it's a nonprofit use or not-for-profit.
The R3, we probably have a number of examples currently with the apartments that are up and down Ford Road on the north, north and south of Ford Road. I can't cite specifically, but I'm sure there's a number of those that fit the same category. I just want to make sure we're on solid footing that we're not.
And another way, because we anticipated the applicant's desire to have the Odd Fellows Building more fully functioning and having events on-site, that's one of the reasons why I brought to you the change in the Straight Farmhouse District to the Historic District and then allow specifically that to be a park slash other historic sites and then the other accessory uses to the historic sites. So, the council did agree with and approve that district. So, one of the things I would talk to the applicants about would be a rezoning of this property that fronts on Merriman and the property that fronts on Block to change that to a straight farm, to a historic, historic building's designation that would allow that. That would put it on even more solid ground.
Okay. So, with the proposed occupancy, two handicap spots are sufficient?
Yes, because there's, you need one handicap spot for the first 25 and then a second one from 25 up to, I believe it's 75 or 50, you give me that number, but, but two is efficient for the number of, for 31 or 30 parking spaces.
Would it be a hardship to put one or two more handicap in there?
Well, if you're reducing then your, your other, I think if we found that it was a problem.
We figured the reason we have extra spots is that we anticipated being an older roof company and when we tried, we anticipated putting in more John Larnell. That's why when we drew this all up, we anticipated that you were going to require more parking and then Mitch, the guy who draws it, said, "Well, if they need handicap, we can put them here." So, we've already addressed that issue of if you require more handicap, that's just simply a strike issue. So, we've already addressed that issue of if you require more handicap, that's just simply a strike issue. I mean, to get two more handicap spots, we do up three spots, and I still believe we have adequate, we have three or four extras already.
You need twenty-six for uh, eighty, so you're.
Yeah, we're still fine.
You you've got plenty of leeway there.
We can push and shove or massage in any way you want it. I mean, so we can draw that out for, if you want four, it's not a problem.
Well, I'm I'm not trying to handicap you, but I'm thinking seventy-five people. And the potential for only two spots seems on the light side. Does it seem that way to you?
I look at numbers, I mean, I listen to, if I was to take every opinion of what to do, I'd never be done. So, I follow by a schedule, the schedule that he gave, we went and complied to that, and then we said, we gotta put some extras in it cause we have the room. And then we can vary, you know, because some cities say, well, it's a water park, we need two, cause everyone's gonna come here, it's gonna be a kid. Where we have W Hall or some house, we may put four or five in there, knowing that we only needed two. So, whatever you want, we we can accommodate, I believe, within reason.
Sure. What do you guys think?
I got one other question that you you brought. John, you get the accessory building there, the garages on the property? Any problem at all using that for your garbage? If you got.
No, we we could.
Roll like rolling carts, I mean, I don't know what you're gonna use it for, but could you throw a few rolling carts in there or? I I know, I've been businesses before where the dumpster had to be inside the building, you had to have the guy come by during the day to get it. Where it'll roll out, it was a small little three, two or three yard or something like that.
That would not be a problem, the uh, garage is there, we did, we put new doors on it, put new roof on it. The idea of like the 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 family that was here on uh, Maplewood that had the big Christmas display.
Right.
They donated that to the museum, so that's a place that we can store things like that.
Gotcha.
Then we have, you know, some outdoor uh, activities during the year that we have a place to be able to put the things for the. For the activities for the outdoors, so that's, it was a brick and cement locked garage, well built, so. That's why we felt that we could leave it there, so we did, we'd be able to continue to use it. But this, I don't anticipate that there would be huge muscle traction, it probably would be the the ability. To be able to put two or three carts in there and just use.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
If we had a problem, that there was a bunch of stuff one time, we'd take it over and put it in the dumpster at the museum, which is next door.
There you go.
That's good. Um, anybody else have anything?
Okay.
A- as I said, we need uh, some notations about lights, we need a notation about uh, sidewalk, um.
Handicap, correct?
Uh, well, there are, yeah, and handicap.
I'm like, we're addressing an issue already. Uh, we're, we're running into an issue, and I'll tell you right now, with the lights that we wanna put in. On the pole are LEDs, and we wanna make sure that the LEDs rating is the same as the other rating. And the lights we looked at didn't comply with that, so we're dealing with a different lighting company right now. And with the scoreboard, it's not done, we didn't feel that was issued then before we came here. But I can tell you right now, we talked with Mario, Mitch has talked with Mario, and we don't have an issue with lighting. We don't believe we have a problem with the lighting in the near future.
I don't think you do either, and what I'm gonna seek is to have these couple items notated on the, on your uh, plans. And to seek for administrative approval, so that we can complete this today.
Yeah, we have no issue with that at all. And I do have, I mean, I got it on my computer, but I consider lights to look at that do comply. And they should be issued, cause the problem is, it's not like that hole, we can't go to the neighbors. So that they get out in the middle of night in the whole backyard, it's all gonna be the lighting from way.
Yeah, we just soon not make it high noon, twenty-four hours a day. Somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, uh, approve P C two zero, they have zeros or four, request for the site plan approval at uh, thirty-one, four thirty Block Street. Uh, with the recommendations of. Or recommendation that Mario oversees the few items left here that need to be adjusted.
Which would be handicap, sidewalk, and lighting?
What on the sidewalk?
Sidewalk on the, is it the front of the building?
I know, it actually do have the sidewalk.
No, the sidewalk is in there.
Yeah, sidewalk's there.
Sidewalk, we're good on the sidewalk, okay.
That's number seven.
I heard something different there.
We just didn't address it.
Okay, lighting and handicap, we get a notation and.
Lighting detail and handicap, yes.
Seek administrative approval for those items?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Randall?
Roll call.
Commissioner Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mativier?
Aye.
Mr. Turnbull?
Aye.
Mrs. Sneeburgh?
Aye.
Good to go.
Okay, you guys are good to go, uh, get with Mario on those couple items, you'll have to make a notation on your drawing.
Mario, this is the call.
Okay.
I need to get those. Mitch and I work together, you guys come down, I do all the interfacing.
Okay.
I'll be with Mitch and it'll all be on the front.
Okay. Sounds good, you're good to go.
With economy and gear.
Yeah.
I was, I was gonna teach a little bit about the the water that goes into the sewer though. I had a three inch meter at dinner hall that the only thing it does is sprinkle a lot.
Oh, boy.
It costs me about three thousand dollars a year for sewage.
Oh, jeez.
Right, yeah.
It's a separate meter.
That's a separate table though, not this table, John.
Okay, good luck.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, um, other business? Has a short agenda here. We're done about the same time we started. Yeah, we got an hour in, close to it. Uh, anybody got any, anything on other business? Yeah, Kevin?
Just one question, Mario, you might be able to answer this, somebody here up at McDonald's.
Yeah.
I have had more questions. What are they doing, what is the piping and stuff around there, are they still testing for uh, contaminants there or?
I'm not sure, uh, exact, I haven't seen the big piping lately, the, I mean, the main thing that was holding us all up, or that up, was D T E.
Right, right.
And so I think what that might be, I've, you know, I'm only here like two days a week usually in the city, so I don't always get to see. Activities, I don't know if, was there some massive pipe there that they had?
They've got a four inch PVC running around the whole perimeter of it with.
Oh, right.
With pipe coming up out of it, then there's some kind of a red pump there along with the the generator, I would assume. Or what they put in there is probably the splicing area and they're gonna have a generator to feed those couple while they're, while D T E is changing theirs. But there is some great big red pumps sitting there, and I've had more people call me up, what is this about? I'm like, I've been on a lot of construction sites and I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was about to say, cause I do remember seeing that when I drove around it, I'm like, I don't know what that is. So, who knows uh, exactly, I just know that they had to do a lot of prep work and I don't know what they're gonna eventually have to do underground.
I think a lot of that was why the buck was being passed back and forth, nobody wanted to attack that causeway for the power. Cause that was power, water main, and something else was run sewer.
And gas.
And gas.
And a T one line.
Right.
There's, there's more crap buried under that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a stick.
Water, and that's what that drain field is for, I think.
Oh.
I'm told the main T one line from Ann Arbor to Detroit to Lansing runs right through that alley.
Oh, boy.
And that was by a guy, and that was by a guy that worked for Corby. And Corby is one of the people that have been putting in all those lines over the last ten, fifteen years.
Right.
So.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of stuff in that.
Yeah, nobody wanted responsibility on that because there's so much.
We're gonna, we're gonna make.
Ten pounds in a five pound bag.
We're gonna make the news when they start excavating it.
Oh, yeah, I, that's.
There's a drawing somewhere, the line is gonna be off.
Right, there there's some, they better get in there with one of the sporks from McDonald's rather than a backhoe or.
Oh.
Anything, cause that's gonna be, they're gonna dig up a lot of stuff.
I think digging that with a teaspoon.
There, exactly.
But.
We did that, we did that out in front of Ford, right up, right out in front of Greenfield Village. There was a fourteen-two that was carrying, and there was a second one below it.
Oh.
Miss Dig came out and only picked up one. They went around the first one and blasted right through the second one, they shut down half a deer barn.
Wow.
And, you know, they, like.
I hope they don't start digging till the heat waves.
That's a good point, that's right, that's a very good point.
Cools off.
God, I walked out of the house a couple times today, holy, I've, the the kids bought me this weather station and it's got a. Pickup sensor and I put it on the front of the house by the mailbox. My house is east-west, it recorded a hundred and three point two.
Wow.
Yesterday it recorded a hundred and two point eight.
Oh, my god.
Well, I'm only working half days right now.
And it feels like it, when you go out of seventy-five degree air conditioning, I gotta say that, and walk out in the yard, it's like, holy mackerel.
Like a mugging.
Yeah. I pity those that uh, have to go through this with no air.
I got a quick question, um, last week when we did the video online. And the guy was buying the mill works, wanted to open that R C track outside, across the street from the Ford Station. At the old mill shop, what's happening with that?
So, that one, the, he hasn't uh, requested going to the council just yet, but it's gonna have to go. To council, it looks like, um, to have it, the council vote on it and. And your recommendation of the of denial is is gonna be the first thing they read. The applicant has just been uh, attempting to provide more and more information as to what is, his site is gonna be and how it's gonna be. He feels is not gonna be detrimental to the neighbors, uh, but, you know.
And where was the location of this?
It's up at the Ma- Maplewood Lumber.
Oh, Maplewood.
Right at Ma- right at north.
Right behind the big.
Right, yeah, so he's got all his, so there's.
The house right there.
Right, there's a house right there and between, in his M P R.
Just to the south of it.
That's what I thought too, the, I thought those are apartments, he was saying that those are offices.
Apartments, I think there's about eight or ten there.
Yeah. And in addition to that, he actually owns the two lots to the south of the building on Middle Belt.
Right.
And so, he wants to put a a track out there as well.
With the, with all that big gigantic indoor space, why, why does he wanna go outside?
I guess, in terms of.
Something that'd be limited to four, five, six months of the year.
Well, he, I believe he wants to have that as extended options for the summer months, but then in the winter months, he would be the interior. So, what his, his idea is.
Okay.
But that is definitely not a C three zone, there's no two ways about that, we said that is not a C three, no. No, so find another way, but you're not doing it that way. And I I was uh, the uh, old uh, Kim, Kim was concerned with it and wanted to address. The applicant, through the FaceTime thing that we were doing, it's like, yeah, you don't get to do that.
I think that.
No, this is our meeting and you can hijack your own meeting, but you ain't hijacking this one. So, I was just curious as to what that, the man was upset. He's a lifetime Garden City resident and he had bought us a good faith. It never occurred to him that that was not what it could be used for. So, apparently, he had been having conversations with downtown development.
Well, it sounds like it's still up in the air and.
Right.
Nothing's in stone, so we'll see where it goes.
Well, you know, we got our hand slapped more or less over the bowling alley, so I just wanted, I I. I looked at the code and that is not A C three, no matter how you slice it.
No.
So.
Yeah, to be determined, I guess.
Okay, nothing else to say?
Anything else?
All I got.
Our next item, Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning manners. Anybody got any comments on them? Uh, Mario, did you have something specific in mind with this?
Uh, no, just, it's usually if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask me, you kinda kinda started that. Um, in terms of things coming up, I gave you guys this month off. The next month, look for uh, the next round of zoning amendment language. Cause there are other items that council members brought up that we'd want to address, some of them being, cause I just had to deal with it today. Um, parking sharing uh, calculations, the idea that if a site services multiple uses, right now. They are required to provide the parking for all their uses. And it do- doesn't make sense uh, for a majority of the time, however, when uh, a use clo- one use closes and another use is predominantly later. There uh, applicants have been saying, well, that I'm gonna close that business at at five o'clock, so I should be able to use their parking. There are um, in other communities, uh, specific formulas where you take percentages based on the hours of operation. So, it is not a complete shutdown of their requirement, per se, but it's a, it's a, it's a. Offloading of some of their cap- capacity to a use that could use it more as a nighttime use, so.
It'll give us a little more latitude with parking.
Yeah, so that, those kind of things, other, other kind of things like that and um. Other residential issues, for example, like amount of hard surface allowed in in some of the homes lately have been excessive in terms of people adding. An eyebrow turnaround, which is allowed, as presumably get a curb cut, but then starting to put in more and more hard surface. To suddenly there are eight cars, or not eight, five cars parked in front of a home. And because technically.
I can show you one where you have about eleven.
There you go, I guess I wasn't wrong about eight. But uh, technically, right now, we don't have any require maximums in terms of hard surface. Uh, all our lot coverage is based totally on structures. So, some communities deal with something like that as limiting the amount of hard surface and. While we do have standards that limit, that specifically say, you're not supposed to park in front of the structure of the the house. You're only supposed to park in the driveway that's leading to the house, to the garage. Uh, I think we need the council and others, and, cause I've had to deal with it in day to day. Find ways to strengthen that language, to make sure that people's front yards actually have a yard and not a full parking lot. When they, when they have their house.
What about behind the house?
Behind the house, that's the thing, is usually that's, that's something that could be allowed, a lot of people don't wanna. Either don't have the clearance on the side of their buil- home to get back there, or they do, but they don't wanna pay that extra, you know. Eighty feet or whatever it is of of asphalt to get into the back and everything. Cause then they complain that they wanna keep their backyard for their, their pool and their toys and everything, but. You know, they don't have any qualms about putting their parking in front of their neighbors, so their neighbors see all their cars.
So, very small house, not far from you, and they blacktopped their entire front yard.
Oh.
It's not a gigantic front yard because it's not a gigantic house, but they blacktopped their entire front yard, there's not a blade of grass there.
Ah, gee, yeah, so that's the kind of stuff that's not supposed to happen. Look, just examples of some of the things we'll be dealing with next round.
It does nothing for the house.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Anybody got anything else? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Close, second, whatever you'd like.
For a second, enter.
Okay, closing the meeting at seven twenty. It's reminding us here, our next meeting is August thirteenth, and unless the governor has something different in mind. I presume we'll be meeting here.
Yep.